Three take over.
Here.
Johnson, here.
Here.
Tagman, here.
Westland?
Here.
Weenan, here.
Runner. Here, if we have a forum next is a pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, then let's move ahead to item number twenty-three C dash zero four seven six reports of standing committees. We have no reports tonight. Next up would be assistance comments, but before we get into that tonight, we have with us Chief Eric Havel, who would like to introduce, we have three new police officers for the city of Galena. They all went through their PTI training and Eric, chief, if you want, let me introduce them to everybody here.
I just want to say thank you for letting us come down here and introduce this kind of a neat situation. We have three officers that came in in a short time in Galena, but we're happy to have them. And we'll be back to full strength as soon as the training's over for our two that just got out of the academy. And then we'll be back to where we should be. So I'll start with Jay Murray. He, I worked with Jay years ago in East Dubuque when I worked over there. It seems like forever ago, but he was also, he worked for Dubuque Police Department for twelve years. And was working for them and decided to come back over to Illinois and was glad to have him. And next is Reese Futterman, Reese and Ashley Forre. Sitting down right there, they both graduated from the academy. And they're starting their field training, actually has one day, I believe, correct? Two days, sorry, two days. And it's Reese's first night tonight, field training. So like I said, we're excited to have him back. And if you guys see him out, they may go away, I'm sure, once they get to know everybody is, they're fairly new, so. But we're happy to have him. So thank you.
Yes, thank you. And we want to welcome each and every one of you to the Galena Police Department. We really do appreciate your interest in this town and of the people that live in it. And also the chief in the police department. So we welcome you, we thank you for taking the job and we work together and accomplish a lot. Thank you. Just be safe out there. That's all I asked of you. All right. Thank you. Thank you for coming. All right, let's move ahead then to item number twenty-three C day zero four seven seven. Assistance comments not to exceed fifteen minutes as an agenda item, not more than three minutes per speaker. If you wish to address the council at this time, step up to the microphone, state your name and your address.
Good evening. My name is Andrew Stangle. I live at eighteen eighteen Downey Street, up near the city landfill. And I would like to pose you guys on the possibility of reinstating the previous open burn policy and or offering me a special accommodation slash variance for burning. It's gonna be a little background of where I'm at. Basically, my property that I recently purchased is on average, two to three hundred yards away from the city landfill where we are right now. It's about fifty acres, give or take, a property of which has been very little maintenance and very little cleanup done over the past fifty to seventy-five years. Over the past two years since I've owned it, I've worked on cleaning it up and piling landscape waste, trees, fringes, leaves, that such. And it's to the point now where in order to finish my cleanup, I need to burn it. I have a place to go with it. The alternative of taking it to the dump is unfeasible for me as it is such a large volume of material. It would take thousands of dollars and thousands of gallons of diesel fuel and trucks and everything else to get it moved, essentially a couple hundred yards down. So to preface all of this, eighteen eighteen Downey Street, where I've lived for twenty-five years, is the closest house to the landfill. So I understand all of the intricacies and all of the issues, I guess, that come with open burn. I understand regulations on open burn should be there. However, I think it should be an option to at least certain certain jurisdictions within the city. So with that, I thank you for your time and please insert.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else wishing to address the council at this time? Okay, then let's move ahead to the agenda public hearings. We have none tonight. Lecter commission, let's go right into the consent agenda, C eight twenty-three dash twenty-three. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda, C eight twenty-three dash twenty-two.
Second.
Been moved by all person Katie Weenan and seconded by jury for calendar number C eight twenty-three dash twenty-three. Any discussion on any of these? All right, take roll call on that.
Johnson?
Yes.
Kiefer?
Yes.
Tagman?
Yes.
Westland?
Yes.
Weenan?
Yes.
Bernstein?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries. Let's move ahead then to unfinished business. We have item number twenty-three C day zero four five six. It's the Northwest Illinois Economic Development Workforce Housing Study Update. And tonight we have the business of Dave Schmidt, who will come up to the microphone and I think he added out some information. Dave, if you would like to come up?
Well, yes.
All right, there you go. Just in case you get some.
So we'll just take a few minutes. So for those of you who are on the air, my name is Dave Schmidt. I'm the regional director in Northwest Illinois Economic Development. We're a privately private organization. Our office is down in Hanover and we primarily work Joe Davis and Carol Townes. And for Carol County, last year, we were working on workforce housing study. It was published this past January. It's done in tandem with the folks over at Black Hawk Hills Regional Council. So I did put packets in front of all of you. High level what we're going to be briefly discussing tonight, but workforce housing includes senior and transitional housing. It includes starter homes, single-family homes, long-term rentals, and also seasonal worker housing. Those are the four main buckets that the study drills into. And to give you a little more context, somebody that falls into the population of a workforce housing worker is somebody that typically makes between thirty and fifty thousand a year, breaking that down hourly. You're looking at fourteen to twenty-four dollars an hour. So we're not talking big money, you know, single-family homes, you know, that might be something looking around like a hundred and ninety thousand or below. Apartments, of course, the rest of those are self-explanatory. What Northwest Illinois Economic is trying to do now is, starting back in September, we've been getting on all the schedules throughout Joe Davis County with all the municipalities. So after tonight, all we have is the Village of Elizabeth left. And Corey and Jason, I will be up here in a second. We've been taking the message of the housing study to all the municipalities, trying to entice them, inspire them to do something about the issue. My organization, we're not venture capitalists, we're not builders, right? So we really need the municipalities to hopefully identify what they'd like in terms of new housing. And then we can help you go after that and try to connect the different municipalities, city of Galena, with developers that might want to do a project, right? But without the municipality supporting yours, basically spinning your wheels. And you're not really going to get any attention from a developer unless they can come in and have a bring light, you know, right to the folks at City Hall, who have already potentially identified parcels that they'd like to see developed. So that's why we're here tonight. The packet that all of you have, there is an executive summary to the study. The full study can be downloaded from my organization's website. It's several dozen pages long. It really gets into the nuts and bolts, charts, graphs, data. The executive summary is a nice synopsis of what they found in terms of what's happening in Joe Davis County. But also the trends going out, you know, decades. In a nutshell, the entire county can absorb about upwards of a hundred and fifty new units a year for the next several years. And that is just in key pace of demand. I did do a quick little, on page three, I'm sorry, on page two. Galena actually lost about a hundred residents between the two censuses, between twenty-ten and twenty-twenty. So at best, you're probably just maintaining current population. But if you kind of look between the lines, what does that mean? That might mean people want to live here or they're living here, but then they're having to work outside of the area maybe over to Dubuque. So like I said, Northwest isn't trying to own housing. What we like to do is hopefully identify what Galena wants in the future, in the next several years. So we wanted to encourage you and help you pull together incentives. So early this year, you passed CPACE, which is great. You know, that's one new arrow in your quiver for workforce housing. So the CPACE program that you all passed, it includes units of five or more as commercial housing. So that is a unique tool that Joe Davis County and specifically Galena has. What I'd like to do is have Jason and then Corey just take a couple minutes. And each kind of have a different angle that, you know, it's all choreographed folks, you know. But Jay, if you don't know Jason already, I'll let him introduce himself. Kind of has a personal story. This all works together and Corey will wrap it up here in a second.
It might be choreographed, but he switches the order every once in a while. My name is Jason, and you were, I am a relatively recent resident of Galena. My wife and I moved here about three years ago and opened a business on Main Street. We had a set workshop in the three hundred block. If you do your pandemic math correctly, that means that we're that kind of crazy and open a business in the global crisis. But I brought my law practice with me and since we've been here, Brianne, my wife, has also taken a position as the administrator at Midwest Medical and Nursing Care Facility. So we've very much touched on this workhouse issue, work, sorry, workers' housing issue in a couple of different ways. We weren't personally looking for workers' housing, but when we arrived in the Galena area, rental was almost impossible to find. And while we were a little crazy, we decided not to sink all our money into a house on a business we didn't know if it would survive or not. We are still renting. Some of the details that you can find, if you really dig into that study, will show that a lot of the housing has been dolled up even even outside of the territory, turned into a lot of vacation homes or a lot of the housing is already more appropriate for that type of residence than it is for a family to move into. We very much felt that, along with rising material costs for constructions, rising interest rates, shrinking inventory, all those kind of things have been lots of fun. Beyond that, as employers on Main Street, we've probably had a dozen, dozen half different employees over those three years. And I would estimate about sixty to seventy percent of them don't have their own residence. In other words, we've been forced to hire folks that, you know, are, even if they're young adults, they're still living with their families in town, they're commuting from other places. Or they're teenagers because of the fact people they can afford to be staffed at our place without, you know, being able to find suitable, you know, being adult because it's not suitable housing. And so, so my role in this, and if you have questions from that perspective, I'm sure a lot of them saying you guys are already very familiar with and lived with us as far as our arrival here. It's a little bit anecdotal, but that's kind of my role of providing a little bit of that perspective. I will touch on one more thing, just kind of on behalf of my, my wife's interest in something David said. Certainly workforce housing can also come in the form of senior housing. Bringing up that type of opportunity for folks that are aging out of some of the homes in town certainly does take some pressure off the real estate market in Laos. And, you know, some younger families and things like that start picking up on some of those properties in Laos. A little bit of upward mobility as far as that goes. So that's also something to consider. But certainly I agree with those results of the study and that we definitely have housing that we're talking about. So thank you guys for your time.
Hey, thank you. Thank you, Jason.
Yeah, hi, Corey Ritter Bush. I know some of you here. Last six or seven years, I've been working in housing issues. Mainly southwest Wisconsin. Some of you might be familiar with my work in Scholesburg, where we put together subdivision with lots for sale for a dollar. So they've been asked, they asked me to be on this task force to help the communities in Joe Davis County. And it's pretty exciting. Really, the plan tells it all. There's, there's no communities out there who are being proactive with housing and it's not paying off for them. Galena is in a unique situation. Because of many factors, with your average age and the tourist situation. If your big missing point is the workforce attraction, right? You have a certain segment that needs to live here and they're all driving from outside the region to get here right now. That's where you need to focus. But really, you could focus on any sort of housing and be successful. And I think you know that. Every community gets its own customized approach. That is a standard in every community I've worked in. There's no, it's not like the suburbs of Chicago where it's kind of the same thing over and over. They all need their own customized approach. And that's something you have to remember, but it's fun being on this task force with these people and with the Northwest Illinois Economic Development Group. And we hope we can work with you in the future. Please reach out to Dave. Dave is the contact for us. If you would like to have further discussions on. Thank you.
It's like you, Jason.
So real quickly, on page eight, you have the appendices. So my shared employee from Joe Davis County is Christine Soap from the planning and development office. She has access to all the GIS mapping. And so she helped put together the list of parcels that are within the city limits. Where you probably have already have roads and utilities running up to the doorsteps of these sites. So if you do all the math, it's about eight hundred and seventy-seven acres of land that my organization feels are crying for develop. That's a lot and a lot to be done with it. I know you've had some projects come your way in the last year. You know, for example, the new minor cottage idea between here and Spring Street. And that's really the nuts and bolts of what we would love Galena to do. So I won't take any more of your time. If you'd like to come back to kind of drill into this a little bit more, maybe it's not in the city council, maybe meeting, maybe we can do it outside at a hot forum style, but we are open to that. Scales Mountain has been the only community that's taken this up. So we've already had two meetings with them. And I think confidently, we can probably see something coming out of that community in the next couple of years. So we'd like to replicate that, you know, with a couple more communities in the next year. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, David. Appreciate it. Thank you, gentlemen, for coming. Okay, then let's move ahead to item number twenty-three C day zero four six zero. It's the second reading imposed on the twenty twenty-three tax levy ordinance for taxes to be collected in twenty twenty-four. Do I have a motion for the second reading? All person, Jerry Westner.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-three tax levy ordinance for taxes to be collected in twenty twenty-four. Would be one million five hundred and ninety-three thousand, six hundred and forty-two. That would be a five percent increase for twenty-three C dash zero four six zero.
It's been moved and seconded by all person Katie Weenan. A good discussion on this. This is the second reading of our tax ordinance. All right, take roll, Mary Beth.
Kiefer?
Yes.
Tagman?
Yes.
Westland?
Yes.
Weenan?
Yes.
Bernstein?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Runner?
Yes, motion carries. Let's move ahead to new business then. Let's move ahead to item number twenty-three C day zero four eight three. It's the presentation on the proposed Blackjack Watershed Project. Tonight, we have with us Mr. Brad Petersburg. Looks like Brad Floransky's here, so Brad, I'll turn it over to you.
All right, thank you for giving us some time this evening. Brad Petersburg, I live south landing road, a couple miles south of Justine Mountain. The other two members of our self-appointed steering committee are Beth Floransky and John Cox. They're both Galena residents, obviously. So you've got a handout in your material somewhere of Blackjack Watershed Project summary. Did you map from the front, map from the back? I think I'll start with just a little bit of history first. About a year ago, I was brainstorming a little bit on the potential for a trail, a hiking trail between Porshumon and Galena. I've been involved in developing trails for a long time. I just really enjoy that, hiking trails. Anyway, in the past, it seemed like most people focused on a route north of Porshumon across Gateway Park. And the challenge there is probably require a tunnel under Highway twenty and then you get to Galena. And there's a railroad track, probably a bridge over that, pretty complicated. So I started brainstorming about a Westerly route. I was aware of the discussion of the Parker Project, that development. It's next to the Galena River Trail. They might support a trail over to Porshumon. So maybe, maybe if we talk to a few landowners, there's a potential there. Anyway, so I thought, well, let me ask a bit. I knew she's involved with the Parker Project and she said she didn't know if the owner would be interested or not. But she said, you know, if we're talking to landowners, we really shouldn't be talking about watershed planning. There's a lot of issues with stormwater runoff. And, you know, every time we get a big rain, major damage along Blackjack Road. Obviously, we've got water rushing down to the Galena River and on from there, carrying some topsoil and everything else. So water quality issues. There's some significant steep ravines reaching up to, right near the properties along Highway twenty, the south side of Highway twenty east town. You can see all kinds of ripraps and stuff have been dumped in those ravines to try to stop the erosion. So there's some real issues in that watershed. What now we're talking about, I'm going to refer to the map again just for a second. We're talking about, and this map on the front is part of the Galena River watershed resource inventory. Beth has done a lot of work, as you know, on this. This is the entire Galena watershed. We're just focused on the Blackjack subwatershed that's on the south side of town. And on the map, a little bit larger picture of that, so the blue outline of the Blackjack subwatershed and borders Highway twenty on the north, you can see Blackjack Road and a diagonal down through there. So I started talking to a few of the landowners and interestingly, one of the first people I spoke with said, well, as long as you're talking to landowners, why aren't you talking about a road through here? We, it's been discussion in the past about a road connecting Highway twenty down the Blackjack Road. And bypass, if you will, to catch traffic coming from Chicagoland, coming into town. And rather than have all the congestion at Fourth Street and Highway twenty, what if we can divert some of that? A road, maybe it's on the east side of Porshumon, maybe on the west side, south down the Blackjack Road. And I said, I have no idea what you're talking about. I never heard of that before. But we ended up talking with Steve Kiefer, county engineer. He said he's been brainstorming on a road for years in that area that could take some of that traffic that's going to Justine Mountain, rather than all that going into town. So our, our purpose here isn't to promote a road or a trail. Well, actually, I kind of promote a trail, but honestly, the main focus is on watershed planning. But what we don't want to do is end up five years from now, let's say we do some significant watershed planning and actually build some berms, maybe some detention ponds, retention basins, whatever. We don't want to end up five years from now looking back and say, gee, if only we would have put this over here and built that over here, it would have been a lot easier to put a trail in or a road in or something else. So we're just, we're wanting to present this idea for your consideration, especially as you get into some comprehensive plans update. Sounds like you're going to be looking in that direction soon. Please give this some, some thought. There may be other potential improvements in that area as well that might impact a watershed plan. So we just want to be thinking ahead and be aware of some of those potential developments so those can be built into a watershed plan. We did have a presentation to the county on this very same topic a month ago or so. And it was very well received. In fact, they agreed to serve as a sponsor for a grant program. And I think I'll let Beth talk about the grant program and any other comments you might want to make.
Thank you, Brad.
Hi. So the NRCS has a program and Brad founded, I have to give him credit. I've done a lot of grant writing over the years and I've never seen a program like this before. It's remarkable. It's the Watershed Protection and Flood Prevention, Prevention Operations Program. And that's what the county was presented and they agreed to be a sponsor. And so they sent a letter to the NRCS requesting to proceed with this project. And what the process is, is now that they've submitted that letter, the NRCS will do a review of the project area and decide if they think it's feasible for a project. And they hire an engineer to go through and evaluate that. And it'll take about a year for that process. If at the end of that year, they determine that it's a feasible project, then a two-year watershed planning process will take place. And NRCS pays for all the consultants and everything for the planning. So it becomes a real opportunity to do a detailed study of an area. We have a countywide water resource management plan. We have the Galena River watershed base plan. This will be a subwatershed plan, which is total, all the plans paid for. But the best part is when projects are identified, they also fund most of the construction for the projects. So if there are flood projects, they'll pay for a hundred percent of those. And they have various other percent that they'll pay for different projects. So that would come going forward. So I think it's, it's just really a remarkable opportunity to address stormwater and flooding issues with good funding support. And we're here. So the county has agreed to be the sponsor. And so if all goes as we hope, then that planning process will be initiated. What we're really here for tonight is to invite you to be collaborators on that. We'll also be going to East Galena Township on Wednesday to share the information with them. But I think part of what is an opportunity, especially with this lead time, is you have time to consider how this fits in with the city's stormwater detention regulations. We know that there are, there's increased annual precipitation and that's going to continue. We have an increase in intense storm events that's going to continue. Some of the detention that may have been put in behind Highway twenty may not be sufficient now. We understand that as development has occurred up there, that's exacerbated the situation on Blackjack. What can be done? And is this an opportunity to really study that and come up with solutions and have some paint, you know, someone help pay for it? And we know that you're also starting the comprehensive planning process. It'd be nice to incorporate this into the planning process. Also, as you're looking at capital improvement plans and other budgeting items, to keep this in mind. But this is an opportunity and if you can leverage and contribute, it's going to just help more be accomplished. And also staff participation, you know, if we do a planning process, it'd be great to have the city integrally involved in that. I think that's all. Unless you have questions that we could try and answer for you.
Briefly, any questions at this time? We'll take this information and re-study it and talk about later, maybe if we want to get involved or whatever. Okay, thank you, Beth.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your guidance.
Thank you.
Okay. Would still ask something. I'm sorry, I missed that.
Come on, who, who you want to ask?
It doesn't matter.
Not up there, Brad.
Sure, we have more questions ourselves. The answers will all be on the desk.
Yeah. What is the, the, and you might, some of these might be larger questions, but oh, what is the difference between this watershed Blackjack project and the larger like watershed study that was done previously and explored?
You want to comment on that, but I'm here actually.
The county one was very broad in general and just identified broadly and generally approaches. And one of the items was an action I had to do with the Galena River Watershed Plan. That became more specific. And so there was more detailed work done, more assessment work of particular streams and everything. So it was really getting into more detail. And some prioritized projects were developed. And the Blackjack Road is identified in there, but we had criteria. And part of the criteria to get a priority project was engineering completed, landowners that are willing and to be participants. So it's in the plan. So um it's in the plan, but this is an opportunity to, two years in a sub watershed, working with all the landowners and having funding for projects and really looking at specific projects in that sub watershed.
Okay, thank you.
More detail.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We have to bring in engineers and they would have to analyze the watershed, the sub watershed. Experiment, I want you to slow down this water. Uh we can build some berms here and there, retention ponds, detention ponds. Different land practices, we also absorb more water, et cetera. So a lot more detail. And our goal, I guess, would be to use this as a model example in other sub watersheds. If we're successful here, it's good in other sub watersheds.
And then I don't know if you can do this in one or or two sentences, but you're a volunteer steering committee of the 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 three of you, right? And so what is your organization or is you're just doing this as part of crossover interest? Or what's the, you know, what's the?
There's no legal entity. We're not out to um lead a project necessarily ourselves, a construction project. We are just simply supporting this effort. We all have strong feelings in uh regarding watershed planning. Uh personally, I have an interest in the trail. I like trails. And we're just volunteering our time and it'd be uh and uh really very beneficial for the county, the city and the local landowners. You're all going to have to collaborate. It's this wa, this sub watershed, part of it's in the city. Most of it currently is in the in the county and you've got what, I think seventy-five landowners. So it, you know, given your collaboration.
Sure. And just have one more su- super brief, the brief one, just to, just to clarify. So there's not, just so that everybody else knows, there's not an ask tonight. This is just a presentation. There's no vote. There's no nothing like that happening. And if I understood correctly, from what you both said, that that the later ask is for the city of, to the city of Galena is um to invite uh the city to be collaborators and to possibly have the, you know, the the this. I guess that's basically it, to invite the city to be collaborators and whatever dot, dot, dot that might mean.
Yeah, and I just want to clarify about our role. So we're sort of initiating a process, but it's up to the local governments. And NRCS will hire the consultants that will do the watershed planning. Um they'll hire the engineers that will design engineered solutions for consideration, working with the planning group. So stakeholders will work with NRCS consultants to to do the entire.
And just for people who might not know, NRCS is the National Resources Conservation Service.
Natural resource, yeah.
We're natural, natural, did I say natural? That's me taking notes.
We'll be happy to visit with you one online or two later.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
And before you go, anybody else?
Yeah, I have a question. Is this watershed problem, a problem ongoing from before? Or is this a problem happening because of what's happening in the newer development? Is that what, is that what this is about? That's my question.
I think it just over time gets exacerbated with additional development. If you don't plan ahead well on watershed planning, plus if there, you know, it seems like the climate, we're getting more severe storms, et cetera. So it just.
Right.
Exacerbated, but what, I mean, we've got beautiful dirt terrain around here with, you know, the steep slopes and side hills. It's gorgeous, but it really is prone to serious erosion problems that lead to water quality issues and other issues. So.
Um, yeah. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Brad. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Okay, then let's move ahead to item number twenty-three C day zero four eight four, discussing a possible action on a contract for the Turner Hall HVAC replacement. What are some type of motion of the all person?
Make a motion to approve a bid from moisture, heating and air conditioning for two hundred twenty thousand six hundred thirty-five dollars for standard commercial RTU carrier, carrier fifty ton with alternate fee addition of a low return to the system to reduce the. Um I don't even know what that word is, in the hall for seventy thousand dollars. The total contract cost will be two hundred thirty-seven thousand dollars, six hundred and thirty-five. Okay.
Second by Cindy Tagware, discussions, you know, it's things probably been up there forever, but uh gratification, I'm not sure what that. Moisture or whether it's shocks that you get, but anyway, uh. All right, any other questions on this? All right, go ahead and take a look.
Yes.
Westman?
Yes.
Yes.
Bernstein?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, motion carries. Let's move ahead to item number twenty-three CJ zero four eight five. It's the warrants to have a motion on.
I will, we approve the warrant item twenty-three C zero four eight five.
Second.
Uh second by a lone person, Pam Bernstein. Any questions on any of the bills? All right, take a look, call her, Beth.
Westman?
Yes.
Ian?
Yes.
Bernstein?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Kiefer?
Yes.
Segmeyer? Yes.
Yes, motion carries. Let's move ahead to item number twenty-three CJ zero four eight six, all persons common, all person, Jerry Westmer.
Like to say, thank the Oaks Club for the Christmas baskets donations that they do every year all throughout the city of Galena and Joe Davis County, and they did over like five hundred baskets this year. And uh the the housing, I think that's something we really gonna need to take a look at in the very near future. Um and that was, book looks like it's pretty well put together. And so hopefully we can become partners with those guys. And Saturday was a a nice zoo downtown. It was just a wonderful day. It was packed and uh the weather cooperated. And I'd like to also, I hope we can bring up Open Burn again uh and very soon.
Okay, all persons, cameras.
Yeah, I'd just like to thank the presenters to both on the housing um issue and the watershed management issue. These are the kinds of topics that um I really appreciate learning more about. And we've got so a lot of information here for our consideration. So so thanks to all of you for doing that.
All persons, Katie.
Um I would agree with Jerry on the Open Burn topic if we could bring that back up maybe as an agenda item. Um and then I've gotten a couple of comments about the parking downtown in the paved lots. Um I don't know if there's any data behind that, but if there's something that we could do or discuss or if we can place it on agenda, if one other person wanted to put it on the agenda as something that we could do for people who live in Galena to get them a permit so they could park there for a couple hours to support the downtown businesses, especially during Christmas shopping time. Where um I don't know what the solution is, but I think that there's intelligent people that we could come up with.
Sorry.
You're set, Gold.
Cam agrees.
I hope you're done.
Yeah.
All persons, Cindy Johnson.
It was a really beautiful uh weekend this weekend. Uh we started out Friday at Turner Hall, you know, you like start studying with you. And Galena is a great place to learn. And really thank you for the people that came and gave us the presentations. I'm trying to be very.
All persons, Cindy Tag.
Um apologies for missing the last meeting. I was sick. So you're welcome for missing my last meeting. Um thanks for the well wishes. And I have a a few things. Um yeah, the luminaria and living windows, fantastic. I have a few requests for possibly closing off uh Main Street because the foot traffic is getting pretty crazy. I don't know if that's a possibility. I'm sure someone will tell me in short order. Um. And thank you to the presenters. Um I just wanted to say, I would love to have a request to see that. We have great packets here and we have great information here. And I'd love to be able to see it up on the big screen for the folks that that come in and then even access, easier access for our live stream viewers so that they could follow along. I know that we can do that easy with a link. I'm just going to give a shout out here to um the Joe Davies Workforce Housing Needs Assessment. You can find this packet that we were looking at and they were talking about it NWILED.org, correct? Okay, so that's good. Thank you. Um garbage is changing this week. It's coming out. I think the city is doing a great job of communicating this with the code red information that you might have heard. You can also sign up for emails. There was an article in the newspaper. If you get your garbage can this week, it's going to come with a plastic packet that says thank you on it. Do not throw that away. That is your direction. So everything to do, do not throw that away. Okay, so last thing, the zoning commission, HPC meetings um as of January will also be livestreamed on our City of Galena YouTube channel. Thank you, Mark Moran and staff for making this happen. And thank you for your patience, as I always make it a longer meeting.
Okay, thank you. All persons, jury.
Um, yeah, I'd like to thank the people that gave the presentation on the housing study and the watershed project. They're both great projects and I hope we can work with you on them. And it was a beautiful weekend in Galena, a lot of people.
Move ahead to item number twenty-three CJ zero four eight seven, city administrator report, Mark.
Uh now for something completely different, just want to talk quickly about tree planting. And I know we talked about this over the years, but as part of the Spring Street construction project, the city essentially was allotted quite a few trees to replace those that were removed. And most of those trees cannot fit in the Spring Street corridor because of the lack of right of way there. So last year, you might recall, planted a lot of them between Irvine and um parting drug out there. Like Tom Bullbar in the right of way around the school. And then now this year, in case you haven't noticed, we planted more kind of in the area of the middle school and the welcome sign near Franklin Street. Got a lot of new trees out at Correct Park.
Yeah.
And another group of them across the river near the Bueller parking lot. So we're really happy with that. There will be more planted next year at the end of the season. And I do want to thank Matt Oldenburg, who seems like training, planting trees to be easy, but actually finding places where trees can be planted in Galena is really challenging. So Matt correlates all that for us. Thank you. And then just looking ahead to the next meeting, it is on Tuesday, the twenty-sixth instead of Monday because of Christmas. And you can expect on that meeting tractor supply annexation, formally annex that property now that the annexation agreement has been signed.
Right, thank you, Mark. So we have twenty-three CJ zero four eight eight, mayor's report. I too want to thank the presenters tonight on both topics. Uh like Pam said, we got lots of information to look at. Discuss a little bit and hopefully we can find a developer, number one, and number two, some land uh for the housing, et cetera, and then the watershed. Been a very busy month. We had the holidays. We had the uh Santa's Jeep parade and uh with the jeeps and stuff. And uh the winter displays and luminarias tonight. And again, the Oaks with the Christmas basket. Mark mentioned the meeting on the twenty-sixth instead of the twenty-fifth and I wish everybody a Merry Christmas. That I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
A second, eh? Oh.
Katie made the motion. I need a second. Thank you, Cindy. All right, take a look, call it.
Weenan?
Yes.
Bernstein?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yeah.
Kiefer?
Yes.
Segmeyer?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, motion carry. We are adjourned. Thank you all.